Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's nine o'clock. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, January the 9th, 2024. We're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're very honored and pleased to have with us again today one of our favorite pastors here in Granbury that's been with us a long time, Pastor Alan Latta with Generations Church, to do the invocation. Pastor Latta.
Almighty God, we call out to you now because we need your help. Help us to have hearts to hear and minds to understand and lives to apply what you would have us to do. In Jesus' name, Lord, we ask for your grace to be upon us in this new year. Lord, we know it's going to be a lively year, and we need your help. Help us, Lord, to walk with sure steps. And Lord, we pray that you would unify us around those things that are most important. And be Americans. Lord, we pray for wisdom for all of our leaders, but especially the ones here today. In Jesus' name, and everybody said.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, a pledge from the great state of Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We have one special presentation, is that right? And that's the five-star award for local registrars. Is that it?
We need county clerk's.
The Department of State Health Services issued the five-star award acknowledging the vital statistics partner who understands the importance of vital statistics and their impact on the citizens of Texas. This award honors partners and clerks who go above and beyond the duties of birth and death registration by attending training and keeping up with the latest legislative legislation and trends. The vital statistics section is proud to honor the county clerk's office at the annual December annual conference. The county clerk's office has received this award from 2015 to 2023 under County Clerk Katie Lane. The persons most involved in achieving this award are Catherine Frost, the Office Manager Annex Two, Jessica Galarza, Tonya Hoffman, Tracy Smith, and Christine Letterman. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Then there are no service awards, am I right? No service awards. So that brings us to the next thing, is the citizens' comments at large. And we have. We have five citizens that are signed up. And again, that if you wish to speak on anything, you must fill out a public participation form on here. So the first person that has signed up is Tony Ridley. Mr. Ridley.
Hey, Judge.
Yes.
Would you indulge me for a second before he comes up? I want to, I'd like to read from the rules of decorum just a couple of things. This is the rules of procedure and decorum that are found online. Anybody can access. Item Roman numeral four says, "The business of Hood County is conducted by and between the members of the Hood County's Commissioners Court and by those members of the county staff, elected officials, department heads, consultants, experts, or members of the public requested to present or participate." As the judge said, if you want to participate as a public speaker, then you fill out a form and turn it in, which has been done. I will read subsection E. under Roman numeral four. "It is the intention of this court to provide an open access to citizens of Hood County to address the Commissioners Court and express themselves on issues of county government. Members of the public are reminded that the Hood County Commissioners Court is a constitutional court with both judicial and legislative powers created under Article 5, Section 1 and Section 18 of the Texas Constitution. As a constitutional court, the Hood County Commissioners Court also possesses the power to issue a contempt of court citation under Section 81.024 of the Texas Local Government Code. Accordingly, members of the public in attendance in any regular, special, or emergency meeting shall conduct themselves with proper respect and decorum in speaking to and/or addressing the court and participating in public discussions before the court in all actions in the presence of the court." Part of Article, Roman numeral four, subsection F. "It is not the intention of the Hood County Commissioners Court to provide a public forum for the demeaning of any individual or group. Neither is it the intention of the court to allow a member or members of the public to insult the honesty and/or integrity of the court as a body, or any member or members of the court individually or collectively. Accordingly, profane insulting or threatening language directed toward the court or any person in the court, in the court's presence, will not be tolerated. Violation, subsection G. Violation of any of these rules may result in the following sanctions: one, cancellation of the remaining time; two, removal from the court; three, contempt, citation, and/or such other civil and criminal sanctions as may be authorized under the Constitution, statutes, and codes of the state of Texas." So Happy New Year, everybody. I hope that we can start this year off right and take care of the business of this county. Thank you, Judge.
Mr. Ridley.
I'm not here to speak about anything on the agenda. I'm here to speak about basically my opinion. I have, since I hired into Hood County four years ago, it has been a common practice to hire within, as I've seen it a dozen, dozen times. I've worked for Hood County faithfully, produced major projects that saved Hood County tens of thousands of dollars. One project, one of the persons up here, I won't call their name, told me I did an excellent job and was amazed that I did that job entirely by myself. I had a big, long speech that I practiced, but now that I'm up here, I'm not even going to go through all that. My main reason to being up here is to say that I have three decades of accomplished. I mean, you had a job posted for Hood County Maintenance Director. I applied for that job. I have three decades of proven worthiness of that job, and yet I was denied even a interview. And I know I'm not naive. I know just because I put in a piece of paper doesn't mean that I'm going to get hired. But I have always had the common courtesy of at least an interview and then tell me, well, we're going to go in a different direction or whatever. I personally feel like that you took my three decades of accomplishments and put it on the floor and rubbed your feet on it and said, you're not good enough. I have proven myself in this county many, many times. And in my final statement, all I got to say is, I felt like you spit in my face. Thank you.
Okay. The second speaker is Tina Brown.
This morning, I'd like to talk about ethics. Many people in office today are not ethical. Are they doing anything illegal? Some are, some aren't. But everything that is legal is not always ethical. Is it illegal for an elected official or candidate to benefit from someone's lies? No. But is it ethical? Is it illegal for an elected official or candidate to spread misinformation? No. But is it ethical? Is it illegal for an elected official to benefit from something they voted on? No. Not unless it's a financial benefit. But is it ethical to benefit in some other way? Is it illegal for an elected official to record a conversation they are not part of? Evidently not, because no one was prosecuted. But is it ethical? Is it illegal for an elected official or candidate to tell a half-truth? No. But is it ethical? Is it illegal for an elected official or candidate to live in one place but claim to live in another place that they own so that they can run for office? Well, we're still waiting to hear about that investigation. But regardless of the outcome, is it ethical? Is it illegal for an elected official to not show up for work and still get paid? Evidently not, because no one was prosecuted. Is it ethical? Is it illegal for an elected official or candidate to tell people they will do something when they know that legally they can't do it? No. Not illegal, but is it ethical? As we begin this new year, I would love for all of you to step up and be an example of good, moral, ethical person and elected official. As we move into this election cycle, I would like you to remember that if just one person questions if something is ethical or a conflict of interest, it probably isn't ethical and probably is a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Okay. Next, Brad Yarborough.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I appreciate the time you gave me to speak today. I'm with Tina with the ethics and the rules of decorum and all the other things we've been preached to by a certain few of you on the court here. The last couple of Commissioners Court, y'all gonna, you preach to us about rules, and you don't follow one rule, which is proving the minutes from the last, from the previous meeting. And that's because the minutes are never available to you guys. The county clerk called out before, two times before, of not having these minutes together. She was three months behind before, now she's a month behind. The odd thing is, when I called her out on it, she left the meeting for four or five minutes, came back, and the minutes were posted. If it's that easy, why are they not done in a timely manner? You know, we, the citizens rely on these minutes, because it takes Drew and them a while to get the video out there, but the minute should be within a week. It should, it's something so simple. Another thing is also with the ethics. It's not ethical for someone to say they live somewhere and they don't. And you guys should be held to a higher standard. And I'm going to give an example, one, if I'm out of order, I apologize, just let me know. But one of you guys on the court has a registration on their vehicle that's out of date, and it's been since September of last year. Well, you're breaking the law. The law says you have to do this. And I think that Commissioner knows who I'm talking about. You gotta be held to a higher standard. Us citizens have to follow the law, follow the rules. Why don't you follow the law, follow the rules? So please, get your registration done, follow the law. Let's be above board if you're going to be in this court. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Michael Davis.
What did he say?
He said tied to the agenda item.
You pass?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On adjourned agenda item.
All right. Well, that takes care of all of the citizens' comments at large. Thank you. All right. So now we go to the miscellaneous business to be discussed. And the first item is, we're all going to agree to this. I can't wait to talk about this. First item is to discuss and take appropriate action to approve the use of the historic courthouse gazebo for the Santa House starting on November the 23rd, 2024 until takedown on January the 4th of 2025. And I have Arles, better known as Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus here, and I want y'all to tell us how many people came to see y'all at Santa's house.
Okay, that's part of my statistics.
So get the mic in front so we can hear you.
This year, we closed at 6,445 guests.
Wow, that is amazing.
From 2016, when we opened the doors, we have seen 32,569 people. This year, we surveyed 1,916, which was about 30%. Out of that 30%, 51% were new guests, had never been with us before. 46 were repeat, and 3% didn't stipulate how many times they'd been with us. Out of that 30%, 60% were from Granbury, 40% were from out of city, and 7% were from out of state or out of country. We have them from Belgium, China. We have them from all over the place, so.
Does that count, when you count people, does that count, just the kids that sit on Santa's lap, or does that include all of us?
No, that's people coming in the door.
All of the grandmas and grandpas.
Mostly what it is, is families. One person will say how many people with their group.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
That's awesome.
Yeah. I think we're.
And I'll tell you one thing. They take the time to give individual treatment to each one of the children that come through there. You talk about the patience of Job to sit there and talk to them, and they, really, you do a fabulous job, and it makes a difference in those children.
And Mrs. Claus is doing this.
I know. Ms. Claus is trying to keep them on schedule, and he's just up there talking to them and doing stuff. I mean, you do, both of you do such a good community work, and all the helpers that you do have in erecting it and putting it up and doing that, it's a tremendous benefit. It really does make Hood County, Granbury, and all the Sanigers a much, much better place and a real good destination to come through for the holidays. So y'all do a wonderful job. So I move that we allow the use of the historic courthouse gazebo for Santa House starting on November the 23rd, 2024 until takedown on November the 4th of 2025. I hear a second. Second. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say, this is one of the first times that we've implemented our facility use policy, so thank you for doing that.
I actually filled that out last year as well.
Oh, okay.
So yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Unanimous.
Thank you. May I say one more thing?
Sure.
We really need to discuss all the volunteers that run this with us. Some are sitting in this courtroom right now. This would not happen without all of these individuals. It's a huge family. You want to say something?
Well, it's just not the people who come and work there.
Yeah. It's everybody. It's everybody. And so just a real quick little story. The closing night, we always close on the 23rd, whatever night that is, and that night was really long, long, long lines. If you're in line at 8:00, we will see you. The last two nights, we had left at 11:00. That's how long the lines were. Having said that, at 8:01 Saturday night, it started pouring, and I mean, the Lord opened the skies. The line was in front of the courthouse when that happened. Some of them left, but the rest of them, we herded into Santa House as much as we could, and those that we couldn't get in there stood in the rain. Umbrellas popped up out of nowhere. And what was so amazing to us is that when somebody walked through the door, they turned around and handed their umbrella out, that some of them never got their umbrellas back. That just shows how wonderful people are and just how great everybody felt about being out there. So that meant a lot to us.
It does a lot. Y'all do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much, really.
Thank you.
We had a motion and a second, but we haven't voted yet.
We voted. Unanimous.
Oh, all right. I was so busy enthralled with Santa's house.
Okay, item number two. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding direct deposit receiver emergency management assistance compact in the amount of $5,183.93, requesting to place at a dispatch overtime. Sheriff's Office. Yes, sir.
There were some questions about this money. What this is, is it takes more than the dispatchers I got, more than deputies. Everybody's got to work together in this world to get something accomplished. Last year, Florida had a hurricane come through. They put out the request to get any help from anybody that is qualified in dispatching to come down and help them out. Tyler Brown, one of our dispatchers, went down there and helped them out. And so that $5,183.93 was the accumulation of his comp time paid back to Hood County for that. So we're just asking that it goes back into the overtime budget. Because of sickness, because of training, because of a lot of different reasons, that overtime budget is getting down there. So since we got this check and it came from dispatch, basically, I'm asking that it goes back into this account to help pay more overtime for this year.
Where is the money now? Has it been deposited?
It's in miscellaneous revenue.
Yeah, it just came here, so you need to decide where it needs to go to.
Oh, it does.
Well, Ms. Auditor, here's one of your decisions. I mean, where should it be? I mean, if we put it, the sheriff wants to put it into dispatch overtime, is that increasing the budget? Is that what the problem is?
Mm-hmm. That's, I, there is, now, I'm, so, are you, can I go ahead and chime in here?
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Okay. So I do, I saw that the dispatch budget, they, it's been, the overtime budget has been down, it's used 75% and 25% of the year. So there is an issue there, but it looks like we can solve that from the actual dispatch salaries, which, if you look at that, because of the, you know, being four people down in October, and I know, I just was speaking to Sean earlier today and through email, and looking at the personnel reports, it looks like some dispatchers were hired, but then they, you know, they go through training, and there's got to be two people working one shift during training. So if he could give us a projection of what he's going to need to finish out at least the next several months, if not the entire year, then I think we could work to solve this through working within the budget. So I know there's, if you look at the expenses, taking the first quarter expense and projecting that out for the year, and even increasing it, this is on regular dispatch pay, not the overtime, and increasing it by 20%, that still leaves some money in regular salaries to be able to move into overtime, but I just, I don't know how much it should be. I think 5,000 is probably not enough, but I don't know what the number is.
The problem is, is that when we get the.
Speak, come into the microphone.
The problem is, is when you get the flu and COVID going around, everybody works in those close quarters, one person gets it, then the next person gets it, then the next person gets it. So if I can keep people from getting sick, it would make it easier, but I don't know what's going to, I can't project that.
You could make some assumptions based on current past history and just let us know.
Well, last time, last year, you guys had to plus me up, I think, twice. I think we went to 40,000 to 60,000 overtime budget.
Yeah, and that's 20, what was in there was 20, right? At the beginning?
Right, 20, because we decreased it because you gave me the two new positions. And so I got five in training now, and if I get all those five through training, which is another three to four months, then I won't need overtime budget because the way we have it, we'll have swing shifts to where we can cover the busy times. But they have to make it through training.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't think 5,000 is going to make you whole in overtime for the rest of the year, but I don't know what it is. So I think we need some kind of projection, just make your best assumptions on what you think it should be.
I mean, last year, last year, I started off with 30,000, and then you guys gave me another 20,000. So 20,000? But that's, that's just an assumption, because I don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah. I'm not sure we can address it today, since it's not, that line item transfer's not on the agenda, but we could next time.
Okay.
It's hard to figure with, over the last few years with COVID and the recommendations or people needing to stay off for at least five days because they're contagious, or we don't want it, like Sean said, spread it around, working in that room, close quarters, and so we'll send them home if they test positive. We don't want to take any chances. So you try to work to that schedule, but then with a lot of different reasons, especially with COVID and flus and different things, then people need to take time off, vacations, whatever, then it's hard to do it. And over the years that I've been sheriff, we've always asked for more and gotten a little less, and then through the years, we've had the treasurer's offices caught it, and we've had to ask for more to bump it up. So, you know, it's not that we're trying to take away the work extra overtime for people, and they're the only group that gets overtime money in the county, but it just happens. So, yeah, if he thinks 20,000, I'd say 20,000 or 25,000, maybe more to cover it, and keep everybody healthy. And at the end of the year, if we don't use it, then it goes back into the general fund, so.
Okay, that would be my, well, I guess I'll form it in a motion then, and anybody, you got?
I know that doesn't, the overtime budget doesn't, isn't in this.
Yeah, so.
But that was my recommendation, if we could put that in there to help.
So if we add this money to their budget, we have to follow that process, because it will increase it.
That's why I would move that we just, my motion is that we receive the EMAC funds into miscellaneous revenue and solve the dispatch overtime within the dispatch budget at a later date.
I have a Fund 10, if I would take the miscellaneous revenue, or do you want it in Fund 5?
I think 10 is.
10 is good.
That would be right, miscellaneous revenue.
The miscellaneous revenue?
Yeah. In Fund 10.
Where it should be.
Well, we have a miscellaneous Fund 10, and then we have a miscellaneous Fund 55, which is your capital project.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this should go in.
I don't think it's enough for capital projects, but I think 10 is fine, but I want to make sure that in your motion, Fund 10 is fine.
Yeah, okay. I'll revise the motion to say that maybe that we receive the EMAC refund into miscellaneous revenue Fund 10 and solve the dispatch overtime within the dispatch budget once we understand that and bring that to the next court. Because we do need to solve that, because you're already, I mean, you're 20, you've used.
I know.
Yeah, so that's my motion.
Second. I'll second that. Motion has been made by Commissioner Samuelson to put it in miscellaneous revenue budget And second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Like I said, if y'all need any more money, y'all come to us. Y'all do an excellent job. Y'all not padding anything. Y'all do a great job. So y'all going to need more money, and when you need it, I'm going to vote to give you more money, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sean. Okay. Item number three. Discuss and take appropriate action, request an extension from the Texas Historical Commission for the removal of the concrete pads from the Hood County courthouse lawn. That was supposed to have been done starting Monday, and it's.
Raining.
And then the rains get, oh, and again, we have until the end of this month, I think, anyway.
I think it's the 15th.
What?
It was till the 15th. So that's why I didn't, because of the deadline of when the agenda items were due and not knowing. Because of the deadline of when the agenda items were due and not knowing what the progress would be up to this point, I just went ahead and put this on here because our next court is the 23rd, which is after the 15th. We may or may not need the extension. I think Michelle told me that, you know, like you said, that they were supposed to start yesterday, but then it's projected to be raining a lot this week, so I don't believe they will be able to be finished by the 15th. The other question was, one of the things that needed to be done was restore it exactly to the way it was, which meant lay sod. And I'm not sure laying sod in the middle of January is the most logical thing to do because it would probably die, and then we'll have to replace it. So, Judge, I would just request... What I was thinking is that if you would write a letter to ask for an extension and then allow some additional time to not... To lay the sod in the spring, that would, I think, be the most economical thing to do.
Well, Jay Riley was talking to the guy that's done it. He's aware of it. He's gonna do it. If the weather hadn't rained, he'd already have it up. So, I don't think we'd need to do it. The Historical Commission knows that we're trying to do it. They understand that we had Santa calls up here, like the numbers that we did have. We're trying to do it. Everybody knows that we're up there where it's gonna be removed. I don't think we'd need to do it. It's gonna happen. They just need to get the weather. The guy's got it on his list. I've spoken to him personally about it. I don't think we need to do anything. That's my opinion. Because he's gonna do it as soon as he can get to it, weather permitting. So, it's not gonna do any good for us to do anything. The guy's gonna do it as soon as he can get to it.
Mm-hmm. It just won't be by the deadline that they imposed.
Can't do anything about that. That's the weather. I think it'll be done by the 25th. Today's the 9th. Hopefully, in six days, it'll be done. It's not gonna be that big a job, he said, for him to remove it. He's the one that poured the concrete. He knows what is gonna be done. And then, the maintenance crew is the one that's gonna re-sod the stuff back. But it's removing the concrete pads.
And what would you...
I think we're doing much to do about nothing. You want to get the Historical Commission involved again on the deal?
Well, I would like to comply with their requirements, and I don't want to waste money on laying sod in January, which was... Their requirement was to restore it to exactly the way it was prior to the installation of the foundation. So, that means putting the grass back. I don't think putting grass back in January is an economical thing to do because we'll have to replace it again in the spring. You know, remember, in the letter, it asked for before and after pictures. So...
Anybody want to make a motion?
Any other discussion?
Golly, it seems like it might not be a terrible idea just to have this as a contingency and say, if we need to, then do so. If it gets done, then move on.
Right.
But... Just say, yeah, if we need to do something with it, let's do it. If not, if everything's working out, just fine, then don't worry about it.
So, would you like to make a motion to that? I'm not sure how you would word that, but if you want to take a stab at it, go ahead.
Yeah, I make a motion that if we fail to meet the deadline, we ask for an extension from the Central Superior Commission to put the courthouse lawn back in original condition.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews, said if we fail to make the deadline of the 15th, that we ask them for another extension. Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Item number four. Discuss and take appropriate action to transfer $1,000 from Fund 55 for the insurance deductible for... From a fleet accident.
This involves Constable Randy Ellis, Precinct 3, in a collision with a deer on Highway 4. This $1,000 is strictly the deductible. The insurance check is already been received for the repair of the vehicle, and all this is, is moving, you know, money from, you know, to cover the deductible. And in talking with the auditor yesterday, you know, she indicates it'd probably be better if it came out of risk management. Is that correct?
So, the way we've handled it in the past, and Becky recommended, we use Fund 55. But after looking through it, in my opinion, it might make more sense to use the insurance line. That way, we can follow it over a long period of time.
Right.
But that insurance line has a little bit of money there, but it's not something that all of the fleet vehicles should be using. And maybe during the next budget session, we can talk more about how to handle that. But most fleets handle their deductible through their repair and maintenance line. In his particular instance, he doesn't have enough to cover it. So, this is an outstanding... This is an out-of-normal situation, so.
Good. Okay, so you want... But what you count? What you count, does it come out of?
So, we have an insurance line managed by Risk Management that would be appropriate. Also, Fund 55 would be okay, too, since we've always done it that way. It's a matter of opinion, but I... In my opinion, I would use the insurance line.
Yeah, so it's Risk Management 4100-49500. Is that the correct?
Yeah.
Which I agree. I don't think repairing or paying for a deductible is... Should be put in capital. But I do agree, Risk Management.
So, you would prefer to do it from Risk Management, then? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
Well, let's do it. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we transfer the $1,000 insurance deductible from Risk Management, you know, for repair of the, you know, Constable Precinct 3's vehicle after collision with the deer.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to transfer $1,000 from Risk Management to cover the $1,000 deductible from Constable Precinct 3's automobile. Second by Commissioner Eagle.
Do you mean...
Any further discussion?
Do you mean transfer or just pay it out of there? Because we're not transferring it.
Transfer from Risk Management. Isn't that what you do?
That's what he's saying. He's just saying, pay it out of there.
Okay. We're not transferring it to another account. We're just paying it. Okay.
You understand? Okay. That's... Motion stands. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Now, item number five. Consider and take appropriate action to approve the purchase of five apparatus and radios, also to reimburse Granbury Volunteer Fire Department for the purchase of their tanker, and donate funds to Texas EMS to be used towards the purchase of an ambulance. Estimated cost with 50% prepaid discount is $7,483,107.50. Estimated cost without prepaid discount is $7,916,107.50. Funding source to be determined by Commissioners Court and the Hood County Auditor. Mr. Jeff Young.
Judge, Commissioners, this is the purchase of the five tankers and the five pumper tankers that we've discussed in court before. After getting two written bids and one verbal bid over the phone, I've kind of determined that Sidens Martin is going to be our best avenue for that. It's the best value for the dollar, and that's what I'm proposing today.
Jim Sabonis is here to walk us through funding.
Leads a savings of $433,000. Am I right, by prepaying it?
Approximately. So, I am gonna say that none of these trucks are under contract at this time, so the cost may fluctuate a little bit up or down. But based on the estimates that I got from Sidens Martin, I went with the high end of their estimate. So, there could actually be some realized savings on top of that as well. I did speak with Commissioner Samuelson yesterday. I did ask for 10 radios for the 10 trucks. Some of these trucks are going to be replacing others, and I won't need to purchase radios for those trucks if it works out that way. But looking at a 36-month delivery time, a lot could change between now and then. If I don't need 10 radios when the trucks are delivered, then I'm not gonna purchase 10 radios.
Those... Some... Four radios could be reused, possibly.
Correct.
If they haven't... If the infrastructure and technology hasn't been completely upgraded by then.
Correct. I would probably wait to order these radios until the trucks were ready to be delivered anyway, just to make sure we're getting the newest pieces of equipment.
Okay. Were you gonna have Mr... Is it Mr. Sabonis? Were you gonna explain to us how this is gonna be financed?
Good evening, Judge, Commissioners. Excuse me, my voice, I'm getting over a cold. We prepared a very simple plan of finance that takes into consideration the funding of the vehicles, but also a number of other strategic issues for the county. And let me start by saying that the county is a superior credit, AA+ rated. Your values have grown significantly, cash balances. You're in an excellent position to fund something if you want, and most importantly, you have very little debt outstanding. So, what we've done is we've worked with Commissioner Samuelson and Stephanie to prepare a simple tax note plan of finance. It involves funding a tax note of... To fund the $7,483,000. But also, what it does is, it allows us to utilize some INS funds that are being levied this year, prepare for us to be able to do some prepayments that are required from excess sales tax collections. So, what we're proposing is that the county go forward and issue a three-year tax note. It's... The tax note is a debt issue authorized by our Texas statutes. It allows you to fund anything that a county can issue debt for and by simply approving an order. The really key point about it is that it is limited to a seven-year amortization, and it's meant for specifically things of this nature that I actually helped develop legislation and helped the first county that uses. It's a way for you to use your high investment-grade credit to borrow funds to buy rolling stock or equipment, things of that nature, and use that cost. So, what we're proposing is this three-year tax note be paid by the interest in seeking ad lorm tax and excess sales tax collection. It's estimated that we have 1.1 million that we need to use to prepay debt. Projected interest rate is about 4%. And there's no increase in the INS tax rate due to this. In fact, over the last few years, the county's been paying down their INS tax rate. It's declined substantially. The timeframe would be that if you approved it, we would organize a competitive bid process. We would receive bids and present them to the Commissioners Court on February 13th. If you approve the winning bid, it'd be submitted to the Attorney General of Texas. Good thing about Texas is our Attorney General reviews all debt issuance by its entities, and they review them, make sure that we follow all legal procedures, and it's valid based on statutes. After their review, we have the funds on March 12th. To give you a feel, right now, the county has $1,542,000 of debt outstanding, and it's outstanding at only 2.08%. It's actually the remaining principal balance of a refunding bond that we did in 2019 that refunded another refunding bond that refunded an original issuance for the county. That's actually been reduced through amortization and prepayment significantly. In fact, the biggest reduction was that in August of 2023, after the budget was approved, part of your budget was to direct the prepayment of 3.6 million of that note. So, we've reduced that, and currently, it has three years of amortization. So, the plan would be to fund the new debt issue, to have it for three years, and as a result, the plan would be to move forward, wrap it around our existing debt, and to put it in place where that the debt payments are level with what we have right now for next year, and then they drop down going forward. A key point I want to mention about this is that right now, because of the prepayment, we have about excess 2.2 million being levied for the INS fund and over this year's payment anyways. So, this accomplishes, again, three goals that would take place. One, it'll give the funds to acquire the equipment and be able to get the discount. Two, it'll actually absorb the excess INS funds that are being funded at the moment and prepare the county to allow for prepayment of future sales tax. You know, we structured that, and over the last few years, the county hasn't issued debt, but we prepaid it with excess collections. And our plan would be that our tax rate will be less next year, and it'll be actually less the future year with no value growth whatsoever. The other thing about this is that, you know, we have only a 2.5 cent, very small INS tax rate. And if we didn't issue this debt last year, we would... Next year, we would have a tax rate of less than a penny and no debt after that year. And I know there's been some discussion about some capital improvements that might need to be made for the jail, and over the years, we've talked about make sure that before we reduce or eliminate our INS, that we take into consideration any other long-term capital plans we have. So, as your advisor, very simple process. In summary, a three-year tax note, but there's been a lot of thought put into this, not just to fund this efficiently. We've studied the different proposals and believe this is the most efficient proposal, but this also helps with the absorption of the excess INS and the excess sales tax that will be used to prepay it. And it puts a position with the county where if they choose to fund something next year, it gives them an opportunity to deal with that. So, in summary, very straightforward plan. And I want to commend Commissioner Samuelson and Stephanie, but they've worked many phone calls and many hours over the holiday to have this ready for the Commissioners. So, that concludes my comments, and I'll answer any questions or provide additional information.
I got a question on... You got on your timeline that we consider an approving ordinance in February 13th, and then you've got the... It has to go down to the Attorney General's office to be approved, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is that being optimistic to think they'll come back within 30 days? Or is your experience that they get back with you pretty quickly?
The... And I've done over 2,500 bond issues. The Attorney General's Office policy is that they know earlier than 15 working days, but I've never missed a closing when we said that in this month. And I anticipate there would be no issue whatsoever. This would be a very standard, simple review process for them. They've reviewed the debt. This county's in good standing, so there's no problem whatsoever. So, I... Again, there's no absolute certainties, but I'm 99.9% that March 12th, we have that. Again, a very simple process. And if it's a concern, there's a process where we would pre-submit the documents. They say 15 business days from a submit or executed, completed documents, but we'll have bond counsel submit the documents prior to that. We do that sometimes in very sophisticated, complex financings to make sure we get any input from them on those documents, but they'll do that. And that way, the only thing they'll have to review is the final pricing of the transaction if you have to concern us. But I'm confident, and I would commit to you, as your financial advisor, if we sell, we'll close as proposed.
I'm glad to hear they got one department down there that gets back with you.
That's one thing they do for us. Again, I think this is a very reasonable timeframe from that perspective.
Good deal. Well, thank you very much. We've got some public speakers up here that want to make their comments, but thank you very much. I think you've done a very good report. Very good. And thank you, Stephanie and Commissioner Samuelson.
Well, give credit where credit's due. This was Commissioner Andrews' idea, and he was on the phone with Mr. Sabonis as well, so thanks for...
Okay. Tina Brown. Want to speak?
About the ambulance, the second part of this.
You've got miscellaneous five.
I know, but there's also a second part of that, ambulance.
I can't even understand what you're saying.
Come up to the mic, please.
She wants to know about the ambulance.
Are you gonna explain the rest of it?
You want to talk about the trucks? Is that what you mean? Yeah, okay. I know that...
So, what she's asking about is where I put in there to consider donating $350,000 to Texas EMS to go towards the purchase of an ambulance. to Texas EMS to go towards the purchase of an ambulance. So I believe Texas EMS has an exclusivity contract with the county. Part of the parts of that contract allowed for them to ask for a subsidy and/or the purchase of an ambulance. That was where I put that in there for that was to consider the purchase of that ambulance. The $350,000 is basically a naked ambulance. That's a cabin chassis that doesn't account for the almost $80,000 that it takes to install the lift system for the cots and all of that stuff in there. This is basically a cabin chassis. Ambulances are the same situation that fire trucks are in. So if we were to order one today, you're still looking at a two-year delivery. They are expected to take delivery on a couple more ambulances within the year. But by the time this new one were to get built and put into service, those other ones would be probably up in their 250,000 mile range. So this was another consideration for a purchase moving towards the future.
Does that answer your question? Are you have any questions? Do you still?
Okay, I have one question that Jeff said you're going to, 10 of these trucks that we're talking about buying, some of them are replacement trucks?
Correct.
How many? Which ones?
So when we first started talking about this, we were talking about the, just the tankers. So we were looking at five tanker trucks. When we started looking down this road of having to do the loan or the needing to take out a loan to help keep up the credit balance, we started looking at, I still have four 2,000 model pumper tankers that have not been refurbished. So we've had five of them that have been, that have gone to Florida. They took everything off the truck from the frame up and rebuilt it almost to a new truck. They're still 2,000 model trucks. They just have nice, clean paint on it. With all the COVID stuff and people not being able to get workers at their plants and supply chain issues and all that other mess that goes along with that, I can't even get them to talk to me about the other four trucks to refurbish. So my plan is if we get the four tankers or the five tankers and then the five pumper tankers, four of those pumper tankers would be replacing the existing pumper tankers that have not yet been refurbished.
So they would go out of service, we would sell them?
Correct.
Okay.
And one of the five, the one that I initially intended to replace it, Toller Fire Department has recently built a second station. They feel that their truck is still in good shape. They would like to retain that to service their station too. So that's why four of them would be a replacement, the other one would be an addition.
But, okay, so on to this about reimbursing the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department for a purchase of a tanker? You know, I didn't discuss that.
Yeah, that.
I mean, they bought one, why are we, why are we buying it, why are we buying it for them? If they, if they could purchase it, because I know some of the fire departments own their own property or apparatus and some is county-owned. So since they bought it, why are we reimbursing them or why would we consider that?
Well, here's the, and Chief Hohhan may want to speak specifically to this. I may butcher it up, but I'll give it a shot. The, they don't have any assets. Granberry Volunteer Fire Department doesn't, doesn't have an asset to borrow money against. Whenever they got this, this new tanker, they had to go take some extraordinary methods to get actual, the loan through on this truck. What they asked, and they will put a contract in there that this truck will stay in service in Hood County for a duration, you know, they can't turn around and sell this thing, but they can borrow money against it to buy another truck, to use their subsidy in the future to buy more vehicles and build their fleet up. It's basically giving them collateral, which they don't have right now. So the, because I asked each department, what is your biggest need? We went around and asked and said, what, what do you need most? Five of those departments said they needed new tankers. Four of those engines that have not been refurbished, again, these are 20, 20 something year old engines that they're not talking to us about refurbishing. So if we get those engines, then we could sell the assets that we'd have left to help offset some of that cost also. Then we've got some, some additional assets there. And then to get those taken care of, and of course, you know, one of those was the, the Pecan, their engine was wrecked and they've bought a replacement that's got some significant issues going on with it. So it would replace that, that truck also.
I'm just trying to figure out why we didn't, if we were going to buy a tanker for the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department and we didn't and they bought it instead, why are we reimbursing them? We, have we, we haven't reimbursed other departments for equipment they have bought, have we?
Well, this is what Granberry asked of us. Like I said, whenever I went around and asked everybody, instead of saying, yeah, buy me a tanker, which is kind of, it's similar to that. This is Granberry's portion of the project here. It's just to, you know, fund that tanker.
Okay, so and then what funds are you talking about donating to Texas EMS for an ambulance? Donate funds. Also reimburse Granberry VFD for the purchase of their tanker and donate funds to Texas EMS.
Yeah.
What funds is that?
It would be part of the, the package here, the whole, the entire project.
Oh, it has nothing to do with Granberry Volunteer Fire Department? It's just the way it's written? It sounds like it's part of that?
No, I'm sorry, that is a whole separate entity here, yes.
Okay, so have we ever donated funds to EMS?
We are in, this county is in a very unique position. We are the only group I can find out there that does not subsidize. Actually, Ricky said there are two others in Texas that does not subsidize our EMS service in any way. Parker County, I mean, yeah, Parker County, they run their ambulance service through the hospital district, paid for by taxes. Erath County owns their ambulance service. Johnson County, except for Cleburne, King and Joshua, AMS provides ambulance service to the rest of the county. Their contract, they run four ambulances. Their contract coming up is going to be 1.4 million tab to the county. And if they add a fifth ambulance, it's going to be 2.2 million. Palopinto County has kind of a mix. Mineral Wells takes care of itself. There's a, the rest of the county, except for Santos, Santo has an EMS ESD that takes care of the Santo area. The rest of it is covered by Sacred Cross. Again, paying for ambulance service through a government subsidy is very, very common. And we have been very fortunate that there's been no subsidy whatsoever going to our ambulance service in Hood County.
Okay, I guess maybe I'm having an issue with, what is donate funds? Are you just talking about it should have been in the budget and it wasn't? And now we're just going to take some funds out of one of these funds we have and donate it? It's like, I'm, I'm confused on the verbiage, I guess.
Okay, so the verbiage was put in there because if the county buys the ambulance, we've now become an ambulance owner. If we donate the funds to Texas EMS and they purchase the ambulance using the money that would, basically we'd be like a subsidy. We're giving them subsidy money for them to use the way they see fit, but it would be towards the purchase of an ambulance. That way, we don't own the ambulance.
Okay, I get that. I don't understand the word donate, I guess.
Well, because if I put on their purchase, then it looks like the county's buying an ambulance.
I guess you could have substituted it with the word subsidize.
Subsidized.
Yeah, subsidize. It's.
Because this county's not in the, in the, in the market, I mean, we're not, we don't usually donate to people or entities.
Subsidy probably would have been a better word. And so similar to the subsidy, I'm trying to make a correlation here, Jeff, so if I'm wrong. Similar to the subsidy that we, that for the volunteer fire departments to use the funds as they see fit, this would be a subsidy to Texas EMS to use the funds as he sees fit. Highly recommended that he buy an ambulance.
So we're talking about borrowing money and giving it to a, to a private entity? Or a, well, I don't know exactly what they're considered. It's like, it's very confusing.
They are.
Yeah, and it's, it's similar to the situation in Johnson County where they pay a subsidy to that ambulance service to provide EMS in the county.
Do they do that through the budget?
I'm sure they do. Now, here's, here is a curve ball that kind of came in from the latest, the last round of the legislature. They passed a law where ambulance services are no longer allowed to do what's called balanced billing. So it's, it's kind of terrible the way that the state has done. And I, and I believe that this is because so many ambulance services are subsidized that they take a little bit different rules on some of this stuff. You go to the hospital and you get a Band-Aid and they can charge you $14. An ambulance service makes a run and do all kinds of life-saving interventions on the way and transport and the insurance company says we're paying the ambulance service $400. Now, the state, and what the ambulance service has been able to do in the past is go, well, this run actually cost us $1,200. The insurance company paid 400, we'll bill the customer for the other 800. The state said you can't do that anymore. There is no more balanced billing as of January 1st. Whatever the insurance company gives them, whatever Medicaid, Medicare gives them, that's it. They're not allowed to ask for any more money than that. And it has put a huge financial strain on the entire EMS service. It is, it's, it's basically forcing government entities to subsidize EMS, those of us that haven't done that in the past.
Okay, I think my questions are answered or more confused, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, the next speaker is Mark Lowry.
Good morning, Judge, gentlemen Commissioners and Madam Commissioner. Mark Lowry, Hood County, Texas. I'm 100% behind our volunteer fire department and our emergency first responders. The sustainability of a community is based significantly on the first responders and life and safety for those who move into our community. I'm taking it from listening to this conversation that the Commissioners Court has done ample due diligence to determine the need for these pieces of equipment. I've done some basic research myself and it looks like the pricing of that is correct. I wasn't, I couldn't hear the gentleman back here too well. I'm not sure where all the monies are coming from, but there was a lot of back and forth. So I'll just have confidence that that money's going to be taken care of property for the county. I did not hear when the delivery date is. I spoke to a police department near Dallas just last month and they were saying if they ordered an SUV, it was going to take two years to get their SUV police cruisers in. So I'm not sure the delivery date on this equipment. I do thank the Commissioners Court for being proactive on looking at this equipment. As I stated early, the first, the first responders and EMS, what Commissioner Andrews just shared about EMS in the state of Texas and not being balanced budgeting, that's concerning on where we're going to go forward because our community's getting older. It's getting larger and if we don't have ample emergency medical services, we're going to be in dire straits. And we'll take this opportunity to talk about these, this equipment. One thing for certain is the equipment don't care whether it's volunteers or full-time career fire department employees driving and operating that equipment. Couple of years ago, we spoke, the district I live, the precinct I live, they wanted to have the voters make a vote on whether they could have a full-time career fire department. The court voted against that, it was never presented to the voters. I've done some numbers, worked up some numbers on this. At the time, Commissioner Wilson stated that like 70% of the fire departments in the United States are volunteer. And that sound very, very good. But if you look at it, there's 19,500 incorporated cities in the United States today. 76% of those cities are less than 5,000 people. 92% are less than 10,000. So thank goodness, we're still small town USA. 29,452 fire departments in the country. 18,873, all volunteers, 5,335 are mostly volunteers. That's 82% of our fire departments are volunteer or mostly volunteer. Gentlemen and ladies, this is coming from the National Volunteer Fire Council, just to validate my numbers. So volunteer fire departments, in the last 10 years, volunteers have dropped 139,700 volunteers. They're saying they're having a more difficult time getting volunteers. Demands are more rigorous in training, increase in emergency medical calls are all, are happening. Employees less willing to, employers are less willing to let employees off to make the calls. Time demand, the me generation that we're all facing. Fair Labor Standards Act, you now have to have, these fire experts back here will tell you, have to two in, two out. In other words, you have to have a certain amount of fire department employees that are on that vehicle before it'll roll out to a crisis. My point is in all of this, I think we can all admit that we got behind the eight ball on Highway 377 expansion in Hood County. I think we can all say we got behind the eight ball on the wastewater treatment plant and water within this community. What I encourage the Commissioners Court to do is right now, right now, let's start looking at the feasibility of going to a hybrid volunteer fire department and a career fire department, maybe have different stations, but let's do some analysis now in 2024 early so that we're not behind the eight ball, three years, four years, five years, 10 years down the road and have to make a decision immediately without having the analytical on the fiscal responsibility, the fiscal feasibility of having a career fire department in Hood County. Our numbers are growing. I think now's the time to start doing that analysis. I ask that the Commissioners direct someone to start, you know, blue chip panel to start looking at this on whether we should have a hybrid or go to a full-time fire department in the, in the future. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next is David Ferris.
Well, I'm going to be real brief. David Ferris here. I was concerned about some of the things, but with the answers on how the funds were going to be addressed and the fact that it's not going to be buying trucks on a 30-year note because they won't last that long. The description about the existing trucks, their ages and conditions, all for it. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Just, Jeff, do you want to respond to the delivery timeframe that Mr. Lowry had questioned?
So the initial quote that I got on the tankers, the water shuttles, basically, those are 36 or a 30-plus month delivery. The pumper tankers, they're showing a 36-plus month delivery. So just like every other emergency vehicle right now, it's about a two-year build.
Our next speaker is Michael Davis.
So just to set the record straight, I'm a professional firefighter, EMT, rescue tech. And so in no way am I against first responders. What I am against is you putting this on the agenda whenever your life plan's fire chief. That's like insider trading. Now, I do got a question for you. So would this come as like a bond or is this like a, like, so to fund this, would this be a bond or would it just be like a loan or what? Because a bond is essentially a loan, right? Okay, so, so you said this is a loan, right? So that makes sense why you helped to, to help the school bond, the, the school bond fail, right? So you can pass this. What this town needs is schools, not more apparatuses. That's what we need. You know, it blows my mind. You know, it blows my mind that your Lipan's Fire Chief and you're putting this on the agenda. He helped it to fail, Mr. Croweater over there, you know? And then all of a sudden, oh, look, we helped the school bond to fail. Hey, but guess what? Now we get to buy stuff for the fire department. In my personal opinion, my professional experience, is this town should have been an ESD a long time ago. With the call volume and the response area, it's ridiculous that it's a volunteer department. But hey, you know, we don't want to raise taxes, right? Who cares about the citizens? Huff and puff all you want. The truth hurts sometimes, doesn't it? You helped the school bond to fail, so you get your apparatuses. What you should do on this vote is recuse yourself from this vote. Laugh back there all you want. You know, hey, we got attorneys here in this town that recuse themselves for, you know, from doing their jobs. Why can't you recuse yourself from doing your job? Your Lipan's Fire Chief. Don't vote. But I bet you will. And just like old Tina Brown said back there about ethics and morals and integrity and stuff, proof's in the pudding. For the first time in long, ever, I agree with Mark Lowry. This should be a paid department. But for some reason, you don't want to make it go full paid. I don't get it. The response area is huge. And the call volume is crazy, but yet, hey, let's just keep it volunteer. So, what you should do, if you had morals and a sense of responsibility, a little bit of ethics and integrity, is recuse yourself from this vote. But I bet you won't. Do the right thing.
Okay, that's all of the speakers on here. Anybody else have any other comment?
Yeah, I'd like to address that. I made it very clear campaigning that the emergency response in this county was behind. I made that very clear when I was out knocking on doors, handing out, heck, look at every piece of campaign literature I put out, that I have a focus on emergency services. This is something that's been, I've been cooking this up. We've been analyzing this, looking at this thing, trying to come up with what the best way forward is for four years. I stepped back in as Lipan's Fire Chief in October because there's a serious need going on there. I don't know if I need to apologize for waking up at 2:00 in the morning to go out and try to save somebody's life, try to put their house out, or meet them out there in a bar ditch and try to take care of their medical needs until EMS gets there. I don't see that that's a conflict of interest. There's nobody in this room that doesn't understand, I have a major focus on emergency services and I want to see things moving forward. Now, as far as what Lipan benefits, particular on this issue, I've already told everybody, Lipan doesn't make the same call runs or call volume that everybody else does. Our engine is one of those that's up for refurbs. I'm not, Lipan's not getting a new engine. Let's give that to another department that makes the calls and give us one of the engines that's already been refurbished. That seems like a pretty, pretty reasonable thing. I'm not looking for anything that puts Lipan above anybody, but I am standing behind these emergency services. I am standing behind the fact that this county needs these vehicles. As far as the volunteer versus paid department, that's a, that's a huge question. Whenever, we've got 10 departments in this county. If you just staffed the stations where they are now, you're looking at $25 million, somewhere in that ballpark. That's what we're paying in county taxes right now. That's about what, you know, double your county taxes and that other, and half of that is covering, covering fire protection. And you've still got places in this county that are outside of five miles to the nearest department. That, that is a discussion that is long ongoing. I would, I would suggest having a conversation with Chief Hohon right there about statistics. Grandberry Volunteer Fire Department, don't, don't put because that's a volunteer that this is a second-rung organization, because it absolutely is not second-rung. And I would dare say, the value that you get from this fire department compared to what it would cost a taxpayer is extraordinary. And I would say that that's the case with a lot of these departments out there. Now, is there, of course, this is a constant evaluation, a constant conversation, where are we? Where are we going in the future? Where, you know, what are the needs? What is the answer? And that's something that a whole lot of people are sitting around talking about routinely. That, we are being set up, you know, with the new stations coming out, the three new stations that are in the heaviest call volume in this county, we're being set up, is that a potential for motion along that lines in the future? There are a lot of discussions going on about this stuff. So, I would invite you to plug into some of these folks and find out what, what's going on with these conversations, what it looks like behind the scenes, what analysis is being, being done, because there's a lot of conversation going on about this. All right, I'm done.
I want to, I want to tag in on that. As people know, a few years back, we had a one-fire department bring in the concept to put forth a petition for a, to go to an ESD. And I went and spoke to every volunteer fire department, which I invite you to go do, go speak to every chief at the volunteer fire departments, we had nine of them at that time, to ask them what they wanted, what they, what their position was. And seven out of the nine made the case that they wanted to stay volunteer. And you can laugh all you want, but that's what, that's what happened. And on discussion with each one of these chiefs and members of the fire department at that point in time, it was the court's decision to not move forward with a ESD that was piecemeal, because we would have to appoint five, an ESD would require us to appoint the court five members to be the board of directors. So, let's do some math here. If we did one out of nine, we would end up with nine, if you interpolated out, ESDs potentially, with 45 boards of director members. And there's differences of opinion on how boards of directors operate, different entities of the state, but they are unelected. And now, I know for a fact that Commissioner Andrews is agonized over this idea for quite a while. And we have had many discussions on this issue over the last three years since the first time somebody brought, one of the fire departments brought in a request to put on a ballot for an ESD, which the court voted down at that time. Didn't say forever, but at that point in time, it didn't, the court decided it wasn't the right thing to do. You can disagree with that, that's fine. But that's what the court decided. Dave didn't decide that, or Kevin didn't decide that, and Nanette wasn't even on here yet. It was decided by the court. That's how this operates. There's five members up here. I don't think anyone on this court has ruled out looking into whatever the best method to provide fire services is in this county. I don't think any one of us are opposed to looking into that. And Mr. Lowry's observations are well-taken. And actually, last year, Mr. Commissioner Andrews, because we were concerned about unelected bureaucrats running it, because there's no accountability. And, you know, like that or not, there's no accountability when you, when you don't have, at least with an elected official, you can vote them out. But he actually tried to introduce a special bill, which El Paso has, to where we could do a county-wide ESD, but the Commissioners Court would be the entity that would be in charge of it because we are elected. If you don't like what decision somebody up here makes, find somebody, run against him and vote him out. That's what we do in this country. That's what we do in this country. And, but the bottom line is this, I know that Commissioner Andrews is the most experienced on this court, dealing with, hands-on with the volunteer fire departments. And I can tell you right now, and you can believe it or not, he did not go back as a chief of that department because he wanted to. He had to. Or he felt that he had to because there was no one there to do it. And I agree with him 100%. There's no way that I would ever apologize for him getting up at three, getting toned at 3:00 in the morning to go clean up an accident that happened out there on Highway 4 somewhere. I commend him for that. And there's absolutely nothing wrong with him being on that volunteer fire department as the chief and being on this Commissioners Court, nothing, because we looked into that. He was concerned about that. You find a law that's different, you let us know. So, the bottom line is this, this Commissioners Court does the best it can and it votes on issues. And the court, three votes taken. I'm a firm believer in essential services, fire, EMS, sheriff's department, court system, roads and bridges. These are all essential services that a county provides. That's our job. And we are going to be looking at potentially, because EMS is in trouble here. We have it on the agenda this Friday at the hospital district. Do we start entertaining a subsidy for EMS so that we can provide, so that ambulance service is out here? How would you like an ambulance service that checks your credit before they come to your house, a private ambulance service? So, it looks to me like the county's going to have to look at stepping in. And this money that we're looking at right now, we've already talked about this. We talked about this, we've been talking about this for three months. This is nothing new. We had Mr. Sabonis come up here weeks ago and lay this all out for a tax note, which we can take up to seven years. And we borrowed against ad valorem tax. That's the collateral. Bond is different. A bond is a different instrument. But I welcome anybody that's got some ideas that are different, but I'll tell you what, I would appreciate it if you'd go talk to the volunteer fire departments themselves and talk to the chiefs and see what they think before you start making decisions that you don't know about. That's what I got. Thank you.
Just quickly, I was going to say that I've heard a lot of discussion about the benefits or potential benefits of having a paid fire department. A lot of talk, but I, as you guys know, I'm a numbers person. I haven't seen any numbers. I haven't seen any analysis that takes the cost of three shifts of full-time staff to cover, and then also to cover weekends, holidays, vacations, add to that, the salaries, benefits, including insurance, retirement, workers' comp, also include support staff, because you would have to have support staff. Don't know how much. Also include the purchase and maintenance of the buildings. If we become a full-paid, full-paid county-wide fire department, paid fire department, then the county would own the buildings, which we do not own currently, and the equipment. We own, the trucks, but there's lots of other equipment that fire departments use that the county currently does not own. What would it cost? What would it do to the tax rate? Could it be done? I mean, that, that has to be done. All of that analysis has to be done and presented to the voters. And as far as I know, there's just been a lot of talk about, we should do it, but I haven't seen any numbers along those lines. And then again, you know, what do the fire departments themselves want? So, that's just my comments.
I got, I got one more thing to throw in. What if you have a brand-new, you got brand-new equipment sitting in there and you got full-time employees, three shifts, because we need to talk about infrastructure, and you go out to a fire, oh, wait a minute, there isn't any water out here. It doesn't matter how brand-new your fire department is or your equipment is, we got to have water. We got to have the infrastructure, which is not in the county. They got to take tankers. Anyway, just a little side note there.
And I'll, I'll throw this out also. The ESD stuff is, that's still an ongoing discussion with all the chiefs. And whenever there's a consensus formed on that, that could be, that's not off the table by any means. So, that's a discussion that's going on.
I can throw out a bare bones minimum option that I think I've discussed with a couple of you in the past. There is a program that's compensated volunteers. It's not benefits, it's not retirement, it's not insurance, it's not anything other than giving them $125 to sit at a station for 12 hours. If we did that at all 12 stations, you're looking at an annual budget north of $2.2 million, just for compensated volunteers. And that, that's just barely scratching the surface. That means you got two guys sitting at a station waiting on a call. Going back to what was said earlier, you go to a structured fire, they do have a two-in, two-out rule. So, you can have two guys get a truck to a fire, but you can't make an interior attack without two more people showing up. So, that would just be a bare minimum, would be $2.2 million, just compensated volunteers with two guys at a station.
And that's a discussion that's being, being had. These are options that are being looked at. So.
If there's an interested group of people that would like to take on that analysis and bring it to the court, I'm all ears.
Let's get back to item number five is about the finance. We've already passed on what we were talking about. The deal here is, do we accept the tax notes as presented here and marked up here by Mr. Sabonis on the deal? I think that's the issue. We already passed everything. And whether we should go ahead and do the prepay is what we're doing on the thing. As far as buying the stuff, we, that's already been voted on. I mean, the seven-point, $9 million has everything in it that was voted on before, except for the ambulance?
Well, I don't think that we actually ever got to a vote on that. We never actually approved the purchase of it. It was, we put it out there and then we went back and buttoned up and tightened that bid up and made sure that we were...
I got approved to move forward with getting bids.
Bids, bids.
Right. It was a month and a half ago, probably.
Right, yeah. Now, this prepay is just putting half down, not all of it.
Correct.
See, I misunderstood that the last time, when you presented it as prepay, I thought we were having to put it all up.
So, there was another vendor, their prepay option was 100% pay upfront.
Okay.
And even with that, with the other vendor, I'm still getting a better cost on this proposal with a 50% down. And I guess the one other question I would have before you guys move forward with the motion, going on Mr. motion, going on Mr. Sabonis, what he had said, would I need to wait to place the order until March, when everything's approved through the state? Or would I be able to move forward with placing the order?
I think you're going to have to wait until it's approved by the state, don't we, Mr.
The general process is this, the -- you can place an order or sign a contract if you have funds to pay for it. If currently, the county has unrestricted cash in excess of 7.9, if it shows, it could do that. And since the money won't be needed until it's actually issued and available, it would never be touched. What we commonly see, and this is the more very standard processes, that because it's just an administrative process for the Attorney General to review and approve the documents, it's very common that on the February 13th, when we present your bids, that you'd actually approve the tax note. And then knowing that the funds will be available, then you can actually go forward and award your contract. That's what I would.
In February?
Correct.
Okay.
And also, based on my understanding, what I've heard, give the option to go back and maybe review the bid, see if there's any more changes in the costs. There's, I think that was just the initial cost, so we can actually hone it to be exactly what the final number is, too. A couple of comments I'll make is that the amount of money you save is more than the interest on the note, and it doesn't count that half of the funds won't be spent that you'll be earning interest on. And the interest will be higher than the 4 percent that was indicated, and also gives you the flexibility to prepay it. So it's very efficient to go forward. You know, sometimes I generally say you fund things when you need to fund them. But the bottom line is, this is one of those situations where everything works out in your favor to go ahead and fund it, take advantage of discount, invest the funds. It's the lowest-cost way to do it overall. And again, I owe apology to Commissioner Andrews. And I want to tell to the county, based on my experience and decades of working in this industry, you're fortunate to have Commissioner Andrews and Commissioner Samuelson. Their joint experience in different areas has made this the most thorough analysis of a purchase of equipment I've ever done in my career.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'll -- any other?
I would make a motion that we approve the borrowing of the tax note for half of the $7,483,107.50 to go forward pending placement of the order once approval out of Austin.
Is that correct, or do we?
Is that how we'd like it stated?
Well, I -- again, I would simply say that you approve the proposed plan of finance and that on the February 13th agenda, that the final contract for purchase and the tax note would be placed on that, if that makes sense to everyone.
The whole 7.483 million. Anyone want to modify?
My understanding, the contract would be full amount.
Right.
With the prepayment. It would fund the full amount at the same time.
All right. I mean, but we only pay half.
Upfront.
You know, once the order's placed, but we don't place the order until we get approval out of Austin. Is that okay? Everybody good with that?
Yeah. Again, I believe that you can do it when we actually, when the Commissioners approve the note issuance prior to closing, you can actually do it then. It's, I've never had a transaction that fail to close. It's just very administrative. Your bond counsel that will work with the county staff to prepare documents, it's just a standard procedure. So my belief is that that February 13th, when we, on the item after you approve the note, would be a contract to purchase, and in the contract would say half would be paid upfront, half would be paid at delivery.
Now, the other comment, question I have for the auditing, that balance of that money's, you know, if we borrow the full 7,400,000, the balance, once the order is placed, that goes into a standalone account dedicated only to the purchase of this equipment. It has to be.
And then Leanne would.
Not be merged with anything else.
And then Leanne would do her work to invest.
Because it's being retired by the -- being a tax note with the ad valorem taxes, correct?
Correct.
And the whole plan.
And Commissioner Wilson, I actually appreciate you mentioning it, but in the actually legal documents that you will approve, the issue of the tax note, it will require that you set up a separate fund for this specific purpose.
Right.
And the only purpose of this, that money can be used, would be to pay the final purchase price when due. And in the documents, it actually indicate, Judge, everything that's indicated, this is a tax note that can be prepaid, and all the aspects we talked will be documented in that and will be submitted for the court's review significantly prior to the actual approval process.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will amend my motion that we do the tax note for the full $7,483,107.50 to allow the payment of half upfront, which generates a savings of $433,000 on the purchase of this equipment and the balance that's not expended, you know, in the initial order placement in a standalone account until final delivery.
Second.
Okay, the motion may be made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the tax plan as stated by Mr. Sabonis here today and will be formalized by the tax note documents, right?
Yes, yes, Judge, absolutely.
With, made by Commissioner Wilson and second by Commissioner Eagle. Okay? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Judge, I will abstain on that. I did not vote abstained.
Okay. Motion carries four.
Perceived conflict.
With one abstention by Commissioner Andrews. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sabonis. Good job. Thank you very much. All right, now to the consent agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Yeah, the transfer from Fund 10 here, C1A1.
C1A1.
Yeah, the departmental line transfer from, that's, yeah, I'd like to pull it off and talk about it.
$8,400 for part-time?
Yes, sir.
Then $9.9.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to, I think we need to talk about that a little bit. Do what?
Okay, so under.
Departmental line transfers.
You want to pull the general administration $9,910?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Other than that, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda with the admission of the general administration of $9,910?
No, ma'am.
I hear second.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the general administration $9,910, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, the next item is.
Well, do we need to talk about that one?
Okay, well, let's talk about it.
Yeah, that's in the district clerk's office. And during the budget, that, my understanding during the budget talk was that position was going away in January. I don't know where we get that answer at this point. I don't know who can speak for the district clerk right now. And I don't know if bringing it out of Fund 10 is the right answer for sure. That's, I have an objection to that. I think there's probably, I don't know what the answer to this is. I just know that coming out of Fund 10 is not the right answer. There should be some money left there in regular salaries. If this is, there's not, okay. I thought she always had an extra position in there, but.
I mean, well, I think there is, because if you do the math on the first quarter, the $41,000, and annualize that, that would be about $165,000, and it's budgeted as $220,000. So there's, well, when we looked at it, there's no wiggle room. They've been fully staffed.
Okay, but then how do you explain that when you annualize the first quarter of three months at $41,000, you annualize that, it doesn't come out to $220,000?
So I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, but when we looked at it, Becky looked at it, and then we looked at it again, it looks like they're right on. Maybe there's a week of wiggle room in there for salary, because they're fully staffed. And they didn't anticipate that part-time budget continuing.
Right. I agree that that part-time budget was not during the budget development that was specifically set at that amount, not for a full year of part-time.
Well, the reason for this, let's just get down to it, it deals with the district clerk's office, right? And it deals right now because the district clerk is incapacitated right now. And we don't know what's going to happen that causes this right now. And this is the IT department, isn't it, from IT department, that we need the support right now? Is that right, Drew? Is Drew still here, or is Owen?
I don't think it's the IT department, but it would affect their budget. It would increase their budget.
Not an IT personnel, he's a person that works part-time, has been working part-time in the district clerk's office.
Yeah, it comes out of the district clerk part-time line, though.
Right.
But his function is some type of IT help.
Right.
Well, I don't know if we can.
He's an analyst, as far as I know.
How are we going to make a decision right now because of something like that?
Yeah.
That's, I don't know. I don't know how to handle this situation. That, her intentions.
I think that what we do, I think that they still need the help right now because of Tona not being there right now and to keep Gary there. Where can we get the money to keep Gary there? I think it's important that we keep him there, maybe for the next month, to see how things will pay out before the next, in a month, to give it a month.
So this was, this recommendation for a line item transfer was made by Becky. It would, in effect, increase their budget, so we would be increasing their budget if we handled it this way.
Do you recommend doing it that way? Do you understand it? Is that?
So my concern is the effect of increasing their budget mid-cycle in this manner. I feel like if we're going to increase the budget, there's more of a due process involved than just a line item transfer. But being as I'm very new, I need to research it a little bit more. But I'm not sure about the district clerk's office and if they need his continued help. I think maybe that's another issue to be discussed. But as far as money goes, if we're going to increase their budget, I think there's a process that is different than what I see.
Would it be better then to give you another month or two weeks to look at it, to see if you would agree with it? Is what you should do? Is that the appropriate action to do?
I think the court needs to decide if they want to continue having him there, because during the budget process, it was determined at that point that the part-time person would not be there any longer. So if we're amending the budget, then we need to amend the budget. But this right here doesn't show a budget amendment, it's just a line item transfer. So in my mind, if we're adding to their budget, we need to follow a different process. I agree.
So you.
Can we table it the next time?
I would say that's appropriate.
Table it.
And then we'll, I'll come back with a budget amendment or whatever.
Okay, do I hear a motion to table this item?
That we table.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to table the general administration $9,910 until the next Commissioners' Court hearing, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously 5-0 to table. Thank you very much, Stephanie. Okay, this brings us down to development. Mr. Clenhead, number one, discuss, consider, take appropriate action, allow the judge to sign the work authorization for the update for the development district map and therefore plan for TNP and approve the estimate cost of $25,000 in the method of payment. Mr. Clenhead.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. We reached out to TNP about doing a master thoroughfare plan, and that price was significantly higher. I believe it was around $200,000 to $250,000. And they had recommended that, you know, they could just update our, we have a thoroughfare and a development district map. There's one map in existence, and it's hanging on the wall on a board, can't copy it, had to take pictures of it, put it on the website. And it was done in '99 by a company that's no longer in business, so I can't even get a copy. But to update that map to where we can put it on GIS and then have new prints is $25,000. And then they recommended that COG walk us through and prepare our master thoroughfare plan for us. And if the court chose to, then they could engage with COG and help us go through it.
Big savings, isn't it? Huge savings.
Now, I guess the decision y'all need to make is if y'all want to spend the $25,000 out of Fund 55, I guess, or if y'all want to wait and budget it.
Let me add this in. So Ryan, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I hear a motion.
Well, let me give some, a little bit of information that might change your mind, I don't know. Ryan Jones, who's with TNP, he had, when he responded, he said, the reason he said to do this small version of the plan was because on North Texas COG, they had indicated that Hood County was category one for, to conduct a complete strategic review, but it was supposed to have been done in 2019. So I reached out to them and asked them what the status was, and he said, Hood County Transportation Plan is listed in our current work plan, and to date, still hasn't been initiated or kicked off as an activity, as an active study. In the years past, North Central Texas COG has conducted countywide needs assessments in support of various counties, some more information. So he suggested that we might have a workshop. And so I don't know if that, I think that we would still, I'm asking you, we would still need to do both, because this is not going to replace what North Texas COG will do with us if we were to schedule a workshop with North Texas, North Central Texas COG. That's a bigger project undertaking, and we still need to do this. Is that correct?
Right. The development district map that we have, that's got our thoroughfare plan on it, some of those roads have been built, and some of them are just, I mean, it shows a road going across the dam, that's never going to happen. So what we do is, we do this $25,000, and I believe they attend two workshops here at the county TNP will to prepare this map. Y'all are going to decide, okay, we want a road here, we want a road here. And then COG's going to take that and develop our master thoroughfare plan that we present to TexDOT for any future corridors.
So the sequence of events would be, we would have these workshops, and then we would meet with North Central Texas COG and.
They're going to base theirs off of what we decide on this thoroughfare.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So we just still need to go ahead and do this, to do the $25,000 plan here, I mean, the map here.
Better sooner than later. I mean, the places we're talking about corridors are undeveloped at this time, but who knows five or 10 years from now.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So where would the funds come from on this? Do we need about 55?
I would say 55.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to authorize County Judge to sign the work authorization for the update of the development district map and thoroughfare plan from TNP and approve the estimated cost of $25,000 to come from Fund 55.
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to allow the county judge to sign the work authorization for the update of development district map and thoroughfare plan from TNP from the estimated cost of $25,000 from Fund 55, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 5-0. Next item, we're going to adjourn into a public hearing. It's now 10 minutes till 11:00. And we're into a public hearing to consider the replat of Blue Branch Ranch Lot 10R.
This replat is being done to combine lots 10 and 11 into a 4.146 acres lot called 10R. Property is located in the Road Corridor District in Precinct 1, and is served by well and onsite sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat, and all comments have been addressed.
Okay, recognize approval?
Staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Okay. Any comments, questions? If not, at nine minutes till 11:00, we're gonna convene back into commissioners' court. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I make a motion. We approve the replat of Blue Branch Ranch, Lot 10R.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the replat of Blue Branch, Blue Branch Ranch, Lot 10R, second by?
Second.
Commissioner Eagles. Any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next, at eight minutes to 11:00, we're gonna adjourn into a public hearing to consider and discuss the replat of Blue Branch Ranch, Lot 66R. Mr. Head.
This replat is being done to combine lots 66, 67, and a 0.329 of an acre tract into a 4.757 acres lot called Lot 66R. It's also in the rural corridor district in precinct one and served by well and onsite sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed the replat, all comments have been addressed, staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, at seven minutes to 11:00, we're gonna convene back into commissioners' court. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, move, we approve the replat of Blue Branch Ranch, Lot 66R.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the replat of Blue Branch Ranch, Lot 66R, second by Commissioner.
Samuelson.
Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. At six minutes to 11:00, we're gonna convene back into a public hearing to discuss and consider for the infrastructure development plan of Waymaker Cottages and RV.
This infrastructure development plan will be on Lot 2, Block 1 of Waymaker Estates in Precinct 1. This property is located in the rural district of Precinct 1 and served by well and onsite sewage facilities. It's proposing to create 12 units to be used for cottages and/or RV spaces. Staff has reviewed this infrastructure plan, and all comments have been addressed.
Okay, recommend approval?
Staff recommends approval as presented.
So will this?
Any questions or comments?
Will this be subject to the new development requirements?
It was.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, at six minutes to 11:00, we're convening back into commissioners' court. Do I hear a motion?
I approve, or move that we approve the infrastructure development plan of Waymaker Cottages and RV.
Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the infrastructure development plan for Waymaker Cottages and RV, second by Commissioner.
Second.
Andrews Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Head. Okay, financial. You're up. Ms. Stephanie Matlock, this is your, you want to come down here and address it from the podium, please?
Really?
No?
Yeah.
Yeah. Come on.
We need to get you on the, on the video.
It's fine. We all have the utmost confidence in you.
Come on, Stephanie.
You're just gonna tell us to pay the bills, aren't you?
I am.
Okay. No, go ahead, please.
The auditor's office has reviewed all invoices for this court and recommends payment.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the, Stephanie, how do you like it so far? Is it?
It's like drinking from a fire hose, but everyone's so kind, so I really do appreciate this opportunity.
Well, good. If, if you need anything, please ask us, we'd be glad to help you out in any way.
I appreciate it.
Do I hear a motion?
As I move that we pay the bills for the period of December 15, 2023, through January 2, 2024, in the amount of $331,295.16.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to pay the invoices for the period of December 15, 2023, through January 2, 2024, in the amount of $331,295.16, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.